This session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research. Additional funding provided by the Friends of Idaho Public Television Endowment.
All right, so we're in the seventh. We'll go to the fifth. Prior to going at ease, the House was in the seventh order of business. Without objection, the House will return to the fifth order of business, report of standing committees. The House is in the fifth order. Oh, since we went at recess, I think we should establish a quorum. So the clerk will unlock the machine and the members will record their presence. Chune Nash. Representative Anderson is here. Sim is not. Scott is here. So every member recorded his presence. Chairman Gannon is here. Clerk will lock the machine and record the roll. Roll call shows 65 present with five absent and excused. A quorum is present and the House is ready for business. Prior to going at recess, the House was in the seventh order of business, and without objection, will return to the fifth order of business, report of standing committees. The House is at the fifth order.
September 1st, 2022. Mr. Speaker, we are committee on revenue and taxation, report that we have had under consideration, House Bill 1, and recommend that it do pass. Harris, Chairman.
House Bill number one, we filed for the second reading. Without objection, the House will now advance the seventh order of business motions, memorials, and resolutions. The House is at the seventh order. Chairman from 14.
Mr. Speaker, I move that all rules interfering with the immediate consideration of House Bill 1 be suspended, making possible the immediate consideration of House Bill 1.
Mr. Speaker, I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. This is non-debatable and requires 47 votes or two-thirds of the body for passage. A yes vote suspends the rules. We take up House Bill number one to debate, and a no vote in sufficient quantity blocks that. The clerk will unlock. Okay, ring the bell. Let Representative Sim in too, please. The clerk will unlock the machine and the members will record their vote on the motion to suspend. Has every member voted? Has any member wished to change his vote? Clerk will lock the machine and record the vote. Vote count shows 58 in favor with 10 against and two absent. The rules are now suspended, and the House will have under consideration House Bill number one. The gentleman from District 21.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would ask unanimous consent as a sense of further reading of House Bill 1.
You've heard the unanimous consent request. Is there an objection? Hearing none, the gentleman has the floor to open the debate.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You have before you House Bill 1. It's a fun number, isn't it? You know, we're here in a special session. What's going on? Eight and a half percent inflation? Folks having trouble paying their bills? This bill does a few things. State of Idaho has had a great year, I guess, revenue-wise, with lots of money in the coffers. And I ask, whose money is that? And the answer is pretty clear: it's our money. It's taxpayers' money. And you gotta get it back. This year, earlier this very year, we had House Bill 436. It provided an income tax reduction in the brackets, reduced the brackets from five to four. It also provided a one-time tax rebate. Good stuff. Money going back where it belongs, in an appropriate metered way. Same year, same year, we're gonna do this again. In fact, a half billion dollars will go back in the tax rebate. What will a half billion dollars do to individuals who are dealing with high inflation? There's a congressional study that showed the effect of inflation on a typical family is about 600 bucks. Interesting number. What will six billion, a half billion dollars do to the economy in general? Just the amount of money going back that way? And you add it to our tax rebate from this very year. It was 350 million last April. 850 million dollars going back, directly back to taxpayers in the form of this rebate. 10% of your 2020 taxes, or 600 to 300 filing jointly or as an individual, the greater of. That's how the rebate works. Pretty fun, pretty cool. This is amazing we can do that. And amazing for Idaho taxpayers, for sure. We offered earlier this year 251 million dollars of ongoing tax relief as we adjusted the brackets. Here, we're adding another 161 million dollars in ongoing bracket tax relief in the same year. 400 million dollars plus in one year of income tax bracket reductions. In two years, we've gone from seven brackets to five brackets to four brackets. This year, one bracket, flat tax in Idaho. Flat tax in Idaho. That's amazing. That's wonderful. Every dollar you earn doesn't get punished as you move up that income rate. We do that in a way as well that leaves all taxpayers from the bottom to the top saving tax money beginning in the first day of 2023. So 850 million dollars in one time, 412 million dollars in ongoing this year. Now, the new bracket works so that the first $2,500 is exempt from income tax. Now, that's inflated since 2000. There's an inflator on there. So it's around 4,500 for an individual, 9,000 for a joint filer. Creates a rate of 5.8. We've gone from 6.925 to 6.5, to 6.0, to 5.8 in the last two years. And look at our coffers. I think, I mean, maybe it's Y. One could speculate. But it's good for Idahoans, obviously, especially at this time. There's a couple of funds that get funded. One fund's called the Public School Income Fund. It already exists. The money from the Idaho Endowment Fund goes in there. And the purpose of this fund is to benefit, use the word twice, benefit the beneficiaries of education. Who are they? Your kids, I think primarily. Talks about... Well, I want to point out certainly that this bill has no appropriation in here. There's no policy in here. It earmarks it, sets it aside. Some have worried, some have not worried on this point, but I have worried that this might be seen as a cherry on top of existing funding. When we go through the appropriation process, agencies, departments, they turn budgets in. They ask for new vehicles. They ask for new supplies. They're gonna add a new building to something. And they budget like we do every year. Nothing changes here. We'll have agencies and education departments and so on submitting their budgets. And this money is earmarked to support that. How could this money be used? It can be used for beneficiaries, for our kids. Is this education savings accounts? Is this vouchers? Is this school buildings to relieve property tax and bonds and levies? I don't know. It can be. Been pushing for those kinds of topics for a long time. We can do things here to relieve some of the local concerns as well with the funds that are available. We often talk about property tax, what we can do to solve that problem. It comes to my committee all the time, and I keep saying, "Call your mayor." We don't do property tax here. We set some mild parameters. Wow, we could do some property tax here if we wanted to, in a meaningful way. Fund students, not systems. 80 million bucks is transferred to the In-Demand Career Fund. That's a new fund. Again, no policies surrounding that fund at all. Read the bill. It doesn't show anything. I know that in some of the discussions in the paper and elsewhere, it talks about this being the... If the 330 million is a K through 12 fund, then it must be that this 80 million is a higher ed fund. But I'll point out that nowhere in this bill does it say that. Again, J.Fat can decide, and your committees can decide what it means to support In-Demand Career Fund, In-Demand Careers with this fund. In my district on South Burdian Road, there's a lineman college. An In-Demand Fund. They're private. I don't need B.S.U. to work this through. We have other ways of doing it. They don't have to go through higher ed. We have CNAs. We have nurses. We have welders. We're working on CDL licenses to drive our products around, in-demand jobs. Electricians, plumbers. All I can do is hope I won't be here next year, that this is used wisely. And it's used to support these kind of in-demand careers. So there's my advice, my two cents worth. I hope that happens. Because this bill doesn't set priorities, doesn't tell where it's gonna go, how it's gonna be spent. It's up to you folks. So we've discussed good policy here, but in years past, we discussed how to fund those in years past. We know what we can do. I hope we do those things. The advisory vote is in the bill. That'll happen in November. Asking for a blessing from the population. Obviously, we're meeting here on short notice. Do we care what they think? We should care what they think. Those are my comments. I'll start and stand for questions. There are no no votes in committee. And I'll stand for questions. I do encourage a green light.
Is there further debate? April 19.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Idaho's students and teachers have been last in the nation for too long, and we're at a breaking point. And we heard about some of those stresses in the committee hearing this morning with testimony from our education stakeholders. We know our facilities are in disrepair. Classrooms are overcrowded. Vacancies are hard to fill. In fact, while we were sitting in that committee hearing, I got an email from my child's school about a vacancy that they're struggling to fill. Idaho values education. We value our children, and it's time for us in this body to honor that and to do better by our schools. It shouldn't have taken those 1,000-plus volunteers, and their thousands of volunteer hours, and the 100,000 voters who signed on to the Quality Education Act to create the pressure to do something. But it seems that was necessary, apparently, to get us to wake up. And now we have our backs against the wall, and so now we have this here before us. This bill is clearly a response to and run around the education initiative. I have never seen a tax bill with an effective date of January 3rd. I don't think any of you have either. What that is because this plan is carefully crafted to, on autopilot, undo the Quality Education Act if it passes. The Quality Education Act would go in effect on January 1st. While we are lame-duck legislators and not in session, this will undo it within 48 hours automatically. That's certainly in line with a lot of efforts of this body to undermine the ballot initiative process. But this is new, and I hope we won't make a habit out of it. It certainly violates the spirit of the Idaho Constitution, which is to give voters the right to make laws on their own when they choose and go through those steps. Because our schools are so desperate and the need is so urgent, I will support this bill in the spirit of doing right by our schools. But my support is qualified, and I need to explain the several ways in which this bill misses the mark. First, a change happened, I think, in the last 24 hours that's really unfortunate. We say we're here today to address inflation, and an earlier version of this bill that was floated had an inflation adjustment so that the funds that we dedicate to education would also increase over time in the out-years. It's really unfortunate that the tax pieces of this will adjust for inflation, but our commitment to kids will erode over time in this bill. That's unfortunate. Let's talk about the income tax change. This is a huge sweeping change we're making over the course of, I don't know, five, six hours. If you go back in history, in 1931, that's when Idaho first enacted its income tax, actually in an extraordinary session, just like we're doing today. It was enacted with bipartisan support and to ease pressure on property taxes, actually. So the bill was about reducing pressure on property taxes and balancing out the way we collect revenue. And I worry, because on what we've seen, that we're actually doing the opposite here, and we have been doing it for years. We're moving away from that balance. This body keeps trimming and cutting down those income taxes and compressing the bands, but never cutting the sales tax, for example, never addressing or increasing property taxes. And so our balance, we're losing that balance, and it's harming Idahoans in ways that they're feeling and they're telling us about. And in those days, from the very beginning, we had four bands with significant levels of income between them, and the top band paid marginal rate that was four times that of that original band. And I think that's a really important piece of our history. We've always asked people who are doing really well and making plenty of income to pay a little bit more, a little bit larger share of their income than people who are scraping by and just making ends meet, because why would we want to tax people into poverty? I don't think we want to do that. That hurts families. That hurts kids. So embedded in that income tax structure we've always had was a value about asking people to pay a little bit more if they're doing really well. And that's what the Quality Education Act did as well. So now we're moving a large majority of taxpayers into just one band with a very smaller group that will be in that first exempt band. And it's changing what we're saying about our values. We're saying that if you are a teacher, you can pay the same marginal tax rate as the CEO. And it moves us further away from ever getting back to a balance of that. And I think the balance across our types of taxes is also important. This bill reduces the corporate income tax rate to 5.8%, which is less than the sales tax of 6%. That means a corporation pays a lower tax rate on its profits than working-class Idahoans pay for food, for diapers, for medicines, and other basic necessities. Do those sound like Idaho values? It doesn't sound like my value. You know what? It doesn't matter with this new flat structure. It doesn't matter if the profits are 50 million. It doesn't matter if your family's income is 5 million. You still pay the same rate as people who are scraping for every dollar and work paycheck to paycheck. You can imagine a single paraprofessional working in our schools, maybe assisting kids who need a little extra help with reading. Her ongoing tax savings under this income tax is $33 a year. Not much to write home about. Meanwhile, a corporate executive raking in $5 million a year will have an ongoing yearly savings of $10,000 a year. And this is on top of the tax cuts, the lopsided tax cuts we've been passing over the past few years. And they will both face that same marginal tax rate. If she gets a raise of $1,000, she pays the same additional income as the CPO. And why can't we ever reduce the sales tax? You know, the people who are hit hardest by the sales tax don't get to come into this building usually. They're usually at work when we're doing our things. They don't get to come and lobby and testify. But we need to be thinking about them too, because their pocketbooks matter, and they're struggling. They're struggling with rising property taxes, rising home prices, rising rents, and everything else that we've been talking about. So that's my concern with this change to the income tax rate cut. Let's talk about those lopsided rebates. These rebates are better than the versions that we've seen before, which came in at $50 for the minimum, or $75 minimum in the last round. Those were frankly insulting, I think, to working Idahoans. I'm really grateful to see the minimum moved up to $300 for an individual, $600 for a married couple. But then when you look at what people at the very top are getting, it just doesn't ring fair. When you look at the middle 20% of households, they'll on average get a check for $445. The average for the people in that top percent bucket will be 6,485. That's a lot more, and that doesn't seem right and doesn't seem fair. I also want to call on us to be better at math and take the politics out of our revenue projections. We are here today, in part, because the legislature adopted a low-ball revenue estimate. I sit on the Joint Economic Outlook and Revenue Assessment Committee. It's not exactly a committee that draws large crowds. Maybe some of you have never even paid attention to the work that we do there. But it's really important. And all of our individual members' projections came in much higher than what we were receiving from the Office of the Governor. So we all listened to presentations. We did our critical thinking. We made our individual estimates of what would happen. And it was way out of line with what the Governor's office, the numbers the Governor's office was giving us. So back in January, the Office of the Governor's forecasted was just, they forecasted 3.6% growth, while the Tax Commission predicted 7.2%. And even though every member on the committee thought it would be higher than 3.6%, the committee adopted the Governor's projection. If the committee had adopted the Tax Commission projection, the legislature could have put an additional $230 million to use back when we were together in January. We would have had those dollars on the table for any number of priorities. But the door was closed. I would have left seeing us use those dollars and put them into education then, because then the schools could have them now. All of the things that our schools are struggling with, the vacancies, the overcrowded classrooms, you know, 40 middle school students in one class. Those things are not, we aren't going to be able to address them until next year because we monkeyed with the math, swept those dollars off the table.
Speaker.
Lady from 23.
Point of order.
Make your point.
I just would like to remind the body of Chapter 13, Section 121, Number 2 of Masons. No person may indulge in personalities impugning the moanings of members, et cetera. And would remind the good lady, please, to avoid that.
Mr. Speaker, that was not my intent.
All right, so with that admonition and reminder, please continue with your debate.
All right. Just to sum up that the committee adopted numbers that were different than what the individuals thought the numbers would be, and now we're here today.
I think you triggered it when you said monkeyed around, but maybe that's...
Thank you. Thank you. I did use the royal "we."
That always makes me feel better.
Mr. Speaker, that is of utmost importance to me. On this, we hope your final day. So in sum, this bill is rolling out the same unoriginal approach that's giving me deja vu. The rebates, we've seen this designed before. We've seen the income tax changes before. And when I look at this bill, I see a lopsided tax cut that feels inevitable. I throw myself in front of the oncoming train every time, and it runs me right over. It doesn't seem to make a difference. But it feels important to me to express my values and what I think we ought to be doing with these revenue dollars and the tax changes that we could be making that would really lift up working families. What's different for me today is that we have a commitment, an opportunity, to really invest in education, to make a commitment for future investment in our schools. You know, we might move up a couple notches from 51st to 49th, and that's an important step. Our work is not done. But it's critical that we do something. In a previous career, I advocated for children's issues, and I had a mentor who did similar work in a state with a similar political environment. And he used to say, "You can't get anything for children unless the rich get more." And I'm sad that that seems to be the truth. But I will be voting yes for our kids, and I urge you all to do the same. Thanks.
Is there further debate? Chairman from 17.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, the...
You know, the Treasure Valley is bursting with growth, as are many parts of our state. And what that means is more students, more facilities, and more expense for education. In fact, I checked with LSO, and this year, they expect 338 more support units, which is about a $38 million increase in the budget, just, just for new students. In fact, they estimate a total of $56 million just for the statutory obligations of the new students and the other obligations in the budget. And this is before inflation, because obviously we know rents, groceries, everything are going up. And if the budget was increased 9% overall for inflation, that would be about a $200 million increase. Inflation's hitting us on all sides and on both ends. And so, as you can see, education needs funding just to stay, just for a maintenance, stay at a maintenance level. And what are you going to do? Are you going to say, "Well, no, we're not going to, we're going to ignore the growth. We're going to ignore the rent increases. We're going to ignore the inflation in, in homes." Well, guess what? We learned this morning, Micron is going to invest $15 billion by 2030 in a big facility here in Boise. And that's going to bring more people, mean more schools, more students, and more expense. And that's just what's going to happen. And even if you don't like that, there's nothing you can do about it. It's, it's, it is what it is. And voters know that growth is costing us money. Voters know this. In Valley View, in Middleton, in Rari, in Coeur d'Alene, a majority of voters, a majority of voters voted in favor of higher property taxes for schools. They didn't reach the threshold that is required, the supermajority, but a majority did support that. People know what's going on out there. The Department of Education, in fact, has just submitted its budget, and it, it, it is going to be even higher, because some of the federal funding has been spent, and now some of the general fund is going to have to be used to replace it. We have no choice but to support education, support the future of our kids, support and somehow get more teachers in our schools and to support this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Further debate? John from 22.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To me, this whole process is flawed. For two years, while we had a real emergency, we asked the Governor to call a special session, and he wouldn't. Now we have a fake emergency, and we call a special session for political purposes. Is the bill bad? No, I think the bill's good. I like the bill. I just don't like the process. I don't like it that we, as a legislative body, get called into a special session, and the only bill we can look at is the bill that's been drafted by the Governor. It's not even, you know, when we talked about calling ourselves back into session, what did we talk about? A subject. Maybe we were limited to that one subject. This time, we're not. We're actually limited to one bill. I think that the openness and the discussion needs to be much more broader than what this bill allowed. Is it a good thing to give a tax break? Yes. Is it a good thing to fund education when you got a $2 billion surplus? Yes. But when we draft a bill, in my opinion, and I realize the Attorney General doesn't agree with my opinion, that this is, this is two topics in this bill. And we all, we all say it, because everybody says, "Well, let me talk about the tax break. I like this, I don't like that." Or, "Let me talk about the education funding." We're all talking about two different topics. Now, if we somehow think we can string this together with, they say with a thread, and I would really like to call, it's kind of like, you know, when a spider makes a web, that's about how tenuous, I believe, the connection is between these two subjects. And I think we, as a legislature, are running into extreme danger when we start allowing that type of connection. The one thing I have really appreciated when we're in this legislative body is that we have a single-subject bill. We're not like the federal government, where you can tax something in here and tax something in there, and then blame somebody for not voting for education, or blame somebody for not voting for tax breaks. That's what this bill is doing. And I think we have to be very careful with this, and yet we don't have the option. We don't have the option of doing two bills and voting on them separately, because this was what the Governor called us to do. And we're a separate branch of government. It's time we start acting like one and not be led around and be held captive by one branch of government. I know it sounds like I'm against the bill. I think it's good legislation. I may probably vote for it. I go back and forth, because I hate the process. And here's the reason I hate the process. All last year, we had a member of this body try to call a bill out of committee, and we voted against it, because, yeah, by rule, he can do it, but by rule, we thought it was a bad process. This, to me, is the same thing. By rule, the Governor can call us back. By rule, he can limit the discussion by topic or by bill. But is that a good process? This is not a good process, ladies and gentlemen. And we have to be very careful as we move forward, that we don't adopt this type of process where we become bound by single subject or single bill, because then we have done away with our legislative process of getting input from the public, getting input between each other. And I think, you know, so often, a lot of us and our, our good Majority Leader will do that quite often. He's got a great idea, but it takes about 10 drafts before he finally gets a bill that he's ready to talk to us about, because you're getting different inputs, because you're getting different ideas. This process doesn't allow us to do that, and I think it's very dangerous if we continue down that path. And so I would urge you to be very cautious. Those of you who are leaving don't have to worry. Those of you who are coming may have to. And those of us who might be staying or might not will have to deal with this process. And I think, to me, it's scary that we're in this situation where we may be forfeiting our public and legislative branch process in, in going this route. So with that, Mr. Speaker, and ladies and gentlemen, I won't take any more of your time, but I just felt like I needed to tell you what I really think, which I normally don't. But, but it's good legislation, and I, I'll probably vote for it, just because you got me in a corner.
John from 21.
Mr. Speaker, the irony, irony of me standing after the good gentleman from 22 isn't lost, but in a nutshell, I would like to simply say what he said. Seriously, I've been challenged by this process. I was personally excluded from the process. I'm, I'm not certain that that sits well and that's an appropriate way to conduct public I would have loved to have seen conversation about some of the other options. I know in my district, people have been screaming about property tax relief. There were ideas that would have given a property tax holiday that I think would have gotten the attention of the citizens of Idaho much more readily than what we're addressing now. But the merits of the policy are one thing, but again, like the good gentleman from 22, I don't think this is good policy, to be limited in the manner in which we, we have been in, in this situation. For me, I would sign on to and vote for a flat constitutional equal protection under the law, flat-rate tax any day of the week. I, I don't have a problem with that. I think that the, giving people back their money is a good thing, especially when we have near $2 billion. But I think that we need to be mindful of the process and make sure that it's working and including all the people selected officials. Thank you.
John from 3.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have to stand up and say, I agree with both the gentleman from 21 and the gentleman from 22. They made very good points. Those are things that we need to consider. America is in a recession. Now, Rush Limbaugh famously said, "Whoever defines the language wins the argument." So there's some debate about what actually defines recession. Well, over 50 years ago, when I was in economics in college, that's kind of weird to hear yourself say over 50 years. That's kind of, yeah. Anyway, over 50 years ago, when I was in college, they said a recession is when the gross domestic product does not increase for two consecutive quarters. And at the time, I thought that's kind of a weird definition, but that's been the definition for, for that long and since before then. Now we're debating about whether or not we're actually in recession. Actually, I like what former President Reagan had said. He said, "A recession is when your neighbor loses his job. A depression is when you lose yours." Well, the question we need to consider as a body here is where is this economy going? We've had two quarters where the gross domestic product did not rise. Is it, where are we going from here? I happen to believe that it's headed downward for a variety of reasons. Fuel, there's, there are some things, there are some indicators that are really frightening. Another thing about being able to get up here and say, go back and look 50 years, I've seen a lot of things happen. I lived through the Carter years. I lived through some things. I've seen these things happen. And we're going down a road that's been traveled before, and it doesn't end well. And so as a deliberative body, we need to look at what can we do? For one thing, inflation is a taxation, is taxation without representation. Actually, this nation fought a revolution over that. Interesting, but that's exactly what it is. And we're talking about the effects of inflation on, on our, on our education system. It affects everyone, and we're all being taxed. And that's why this tax portion of this bill is tremendous. I love that part of this bill. It's, it's necessary, and we need to do what we can do to help our constituents. I get calls about property taxes. Taxes is a big deal, and it's going to continue to get worse, and inflation is robbing us all blind. Another thing you have to say when you say over 50 years is, I'm old, retired, semi-retired, I guess. And anyway, inflation's robbing my retirement, and there's really not a lot you can do. I still work some, so I can adjust things, but the reality is, this is hurting us all. And so we need to look at where we're headed. And there again, I think this is kind of a frightening area we're going down. The thing that bothers me about this bill is that, take $410 million and put it in a bucket for education. We did not need to do that now. I agree that it's not a single-subject bill with this, but we did not need to do that. We could look at that next year. Once we put that in that bucket, then we can no longer access it. One of the things I really like about this legislature, and what we've been done over the years, is we set aside money for a rainy day fund for times just like this, when the economy may not go the way we'd like to see it go. So in that light, I think it would make sense, I wish we could have just passed the tax portion of this, waited on education till next session for the new legislature, and actually considered those things then. Because once it's in that bucket, everybody says we could use it for various things, and that's true, and you don't know what the legislature's going to do. But that frightens me a lot. We're talking about enrollment in schools. At Coeur d'Alene School, there's, Coeur d'Alene, Cootin County has grown exponentially, and enrollment is flat in the schools. Now, that's, I mean, we've got some things about critical race theory. We've got things, there are reasons why people are losing some confidence in the schools. And that's not really a debate for here, because that's a subject other than taxation. That's what we were supposed to be here for. But at any rate, I think that it's too bad that we couldn't have split these bills. I would have loved to seen two votes, and I think the tax portion is good, and I agree with the gentleman from 22. I really don't know how I'm going to vote on this. The tax portion is good, and the education portion is not, portion is not good. And so sometimes we're faced with that, especially with a two-subject bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Lady from 1.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wanted to make a motion to suspend House Rule 54. And if I can speak to my motion.
Is there a second? All right. So while people are looking up House Rule 54.
That one or more substantive proposition shall remain, but no bill, resolution, memorial, or, I can't get it, I'm sorry, or Senate amendment to any House bill or proposition shall be divisible, if a question be divided, the portion thereof shall be voted on separately the same as it had been offered alone. And so what that bill says is that we can divide bills when they're, they need divided. If we don't want to vote on the whole thing, we can vote on them separate. And these are three separate topics, as we've heard over and over again. The problem is, the, I guess, shouldn't be a problem. Our Constitution is super clear on this issue. Article 3, Section 16 says unity of subject and title. Every, every act shall embrace but one subject and matters properly connected therewithin. Which subject shall be engrossed in the title? And it goes on. So our Constitution should be the most superior law. And the superior law is says, we should only have one topic for one bill. Now, we heard testimony in committee that people felt uncomfortable, like we're starting to cross a line here. Maybe that's because the legislature didn't write this bill. The executive branch wrote this bill. If we allow our authority to be delegated to the Governor, what, what are we really doing here? If, if that is a job of the Governor to write our bills for us, and we just kind of rubber-stamp them, I'm sorry, the man on the second floor, and we just rubber-stamp them. So I think the problem may be that the executive branch is maybe unclear what the Constitution says, one topic per bill. So Mason's rule is really clear on this. It's really easy to do. We just have to take a vote, and 2/3 of the body has to, to vote in favor of that. So I guess where we're running in the problem is our House rule. So our House rule is actually in violation of the Constitution. So I'm asking that we suspend this House rule, and then we just divide this, so we can vote on the school portion, the income tax portion.
Mr. Speaker. John from 2.
Point, point of order here?
Point of order. Go ahead. State your point.
Is this a debatable motion?
I'm just presenting my bill. But I can still present.
It's me. While you have your rule books open, go to Rule 53. And the motion to suspend rules is non-debatable, so please take your seat. As my interpretation correct, Madam Clerk? Yes, okay. All right. So we have a motion properly before us. Gentleman from 13.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Could we ask for an inquiry, a parliamentary inquiry on the ruling of 54? If it is necessary that 54 has to be suspended in order to divide a question?
The House will be at ease.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Idaho In Session is brought to you by Union Pacific Foundation, Boise State University School of Public Service, Idaho State Broadcasters Association, Idaho Cable Broadband Association, Association of Idaho Cities, University of Idaho James A. and Louise McClure Center for Public Policy Research.
The House will be in order. Prior to going at ease, the House was in the seventh order of business, and we were debating House Bill Number One. There is a motion before the body to suspend the House Rule 54 that deals with division of questions. It is non-debatable under Rule 53. So the, since we're all in our seats, the clerk will unlock the machine, and the members will cast their votes on the motion to suspend Rule 54. Keep in mind, it requires 47 votes or two-thirds of the body for passage. Clerk will unlock the machine, the members will record their votes. Does any member wish to change his vote? Clerk will lock the machine and record the vote on the motion to suspend Rule 54. The vote count is 22 in favor with 48 against. The motion has failed. Debate is open on House Bill Number One. Is there further debate? Gentleman 34.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll give you three reasons to vote against House Bill Number One. Number one, the process is flawed. Legislation should not be driven by the, by the office on the second floor, and proclamation made says that we are limited to one subject. You cannot limit it to one RS. There's precedence on this. Prior gentlemen on the second floor have tried to limit it to one RS, but have actually seen those RSs be changed and adjusted. So the idea that we are here just to consider an RS and nothing else is a flawed idea. However, it's working that way because committee chairmen have locked down the process. I know of at least three other RSs that have been produced and ready to present in committee that have been denied committee presentations. One reduces the sales tax. Another RS provides a bigger income tax cut to 5%, has the same rebate, but does not do the work of the appropriations committee, and says, you know, we'll leave the education spending piece to the next legislative session.
The gentleman, we're going to debate the bill in front of us, not the ones that could have been.
That's my point.
So a quick reference of what maybe have been, I'll allow, but any elaboration, yeah, it's not about the bill.
Fair enough. My point is that that legislation doesn't exist exactly because of the flawed process. The, so the process is broken in that a properly running legislator, legislature should consider any and all options, should consider adjustments to those options, and all sorts of other ideas. There are lots of ways to tackle this issue where families are hurting from inflation. Families can be taxed out of their homes. Property taxes are going through the roof. And there's other ways to tackle this problem besides the one option which we've been presented here. The process is also broken in the fact that it was just in the last 24 hours that the RS mentioned in the gentleman on the second floor's proclamation was changed. And so, literally, in the committee hearing a couple hours ago, you saw this new RS being handed to committee members as they were to consider it in that very meeting, seeing it for the first time in its new form. That is not how good legislation is made. I'll give you a second reason to vote against this bill. Substance. The substance of this bill, yes, we are trying to return the overcharging of tax collections from households and from businesses, and we ought to do that. A $500 million rebate is just barely a fourth of the amount of the surplus we have. The ongoing income tax reduction is $161 million, which is a tiny fraction of the ongoing structural surplus that we're seeing every year. We hear time and again that Idaho balances its budget. Well, we really don't. As the good lady from 19 mentioned, year after year, we have tax collections over and above projections, because we have a structural budget surplus where we're collecting more taxes than the government needs in order to do its operations. What we ought to do is cut the tax rates. Property taxes, we could change that to, for local and county governments. We could change the sales tax rate. We could change the income tax rate by even more, going down to 5% would be $806 million. Still, only a fraction of the surplus we have, but at least it would get us closer to an ongoing balanced budget instead of an ongoing surplus budget. The other substance in this bill is the education spending. And yes, everyone's calling it the education spending component, and at the same time trying to say it's a tax issue. Well, we are committing $410 million ongoing from sales tax revenue. And by the way, sales tax revenue is typically divided up by percentage. Some percent goes to local, some percent goes here. But this is one of the few categories of sales tax that's going to be decided by a dollar amount. What happens when there's a recession and sales tax revenues drop? $410 million every year is committed. That could overpower the other portions of the, of the sales tax. Local governments who get sales tax revenue sharing ought to be very worried about that component. If that sales tax revenue drops, local governments are going to be the ones who feel that pinch. I don't think the education component ought to be in here at all. In fact, it doesn't even take effect till fiscal year '24, and in between, we'll have a legislative session. In other words, we are here deciding essentially an appropriation issue that the next legislative session will decide. That's not a good way to do legislation. The next legislative session ought to be deciding the appropriations for the following fiscal year. We shouldn't be appropriating for years and years on out from the '66 legislature. So the substance of this bill is really lacking, and I want to point out, too, that it's been said that the education component is paltry compared to the income tax cut. I argue it's not. The one-time rebate of $500 million and the ongoing $161 million of income tax cut in two years amounts to about $820 million. In two years, the education component adds up to about $820 million. Then ongoing, every year from there, the education component overpowers the tax cut. The education component of this will be far larger than the relief given to households from this bill. The substance of this bill is flawed. Reason number three to oppose it is the bad precedents we are setting today if we pass this. Number one, we are letting a lobby group run an initiative and let that drive the legislative process, because somebody might be worried about whether or not that initiative passes. You can expect every cycle to see that lobby group and other lobby groups try and drive everything that happens here, because they know that they'll have an executive or legislative branch who is afraid of a proposition passing. It's going to set a precedence for doing that over and over again. And the last bad precedence we're setting is it is clear that this bill has three subjects in it. It has a tax cut, it has a spending component, and we've all been calling it that, and it also has a ballot question. There are clearly three subjects in this. And so, now we're going, we are going to set the precedent, and they'll look back at the '66 extraordinary session and say, you know what? That bill had three subjects. This bill ought to pass, because it's only got two subjects. So today, we all raised our hand and swore to uphold the Idaho Constitution. This bill actually clearly violates Article 3, Section 16 of the Idaho Constitution, in my opinion, and I think we ought to shy away from that kind of bad precedence. So three good reasons to vote no on this. A reason to vote yes on something else is we can do massive tax relief, leave the appropriation to the next legislative session, and do what's best for Idaho households. There are lots of other ways to help them, cut gas taxes, sales taxes, property taxes. Let's do it.
Lady from 11.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Motion to amend.
Excuse me?
Motion to amend this bill.
So you're moving the bill to general orders. And there is a second by the lady from 35. I'm pretty sure this is a debatable bill, since we've done this one before, multiple times. Debate's open on the, does the lady care to defend her motion? The other floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In light of what we've been hearing today, what we heard during the committee and the emails that I'm getting from my constituents, I don't feel comfortable with voting on a bill in this manner, and I don't think many of us feel comfortable in voting on a bill in this manner. So I think it's fair to send it to the amending orders or general orders to be able to work out a better mechanism, to be able to vote on the things that our constituents want us to be voting on, and to be able to not rush things through, and giving the people a chance to be able to come and speak and prepare to come and speak in front of the committee, to be able to say their mind and their piece in regards to what they're experiencing and what they want to see happen. And so, I just feel that it's in the best interest of the body to be able to approach this in a different manner. Thank you.
Is there further debate on the motion to send House Bill One to general orders? Gentleman from 13.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the lady from 11 yield to a question?
The lady yields.
Lady yields.
Lady yields.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and good lady. Do you serve on the Jermaine Committee that this came through this morning?
I believe the gentleman knows.
I don't. I'm trying to look it up online right now, and I can't, I haven't found it yet.
Are you on revving tax?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Follow-up question, Mr. Speaker.
Lady yield further. Will the lady yield?
No.
Lady doesn't yield.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the chairman of the committee yield to a question, then?
Will the gentleman from 21 yield?
He yields.
Gentleman yields.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, good gentleman. Was there a motion made in committee to send this bill to general orders, or was the motion made to send it straight to the floor?
There is, Mr. Speaker. There is a traditional motion made to send this bill to the fourth and due pass recommendation.
Follow-up, Mr. Speaker.
Will the gentleman yield?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, good gentleman. Was there any discussion in the committee or an attempt to send this to general orders by the Jermaine Committee?
Gentleman 21.
There was not. There was angst expressed on these kinds of topics, but there was no discussion of sending this to the amending order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there further debate on the motion? Gentleman from 21.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, certainly I find this motion hostile to the bill. Uh, Mr. Speaker, certainly I find this, uh, motion hostile to the bill. We've gone through the process this morning in both introductory hearing and the, in the full hearing. We had ample opportunity to discuss the bill, to discuss the options, to do things with it. I might say in the introductory hearing, uh, when the bill doesn't exist yet, um, there is almost no end to what a committee might do to this kind of a bill if they chose to. They could say, I want to send this bill to be introduced, such and such a bill, uh, replacing Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, adding with the following words, right? And completely replace it, and we could vote on that motion in the introductory hearing. Now, that didn't happen. We discussed the, uh, the introduction. We discussed the R S. There was a simple motion made, and a simple motion passed. I will reiterate what I said in my, in my opening statement. There were no no votes in committee today.
Is there further debate on the motion to send House Bill 1 to general orders? Lady from 35.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, will the gentleman from 21 stand for a question?
Good gentleman yield.
Yes, happy to.
Gentleman yields.
Thank you. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm just curious how long the, um, committee members had to look over the, um, R S? If they, if... Did they have a few days, hours? I'm just curious.
Gentleman 21.
Thank you for that. So the R S, an R S typically, typically appears that morning in your packet. It's private property. You open a packet and there it is. Not this time. This R S has been out in, in the public domain on the website for days and over, and over a week. There was one minor change of one line, one percentage that we removed, I guess, uh, late yesterday. But 99.9% of this bill, this R S, has been in the public purview for over a week.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is there further debate? Good lady from 1.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, just a debate in favor of the motion. I think the only thing being hostile here is the hostility to our Constitution. Uh, our Constitution is super clear.
Good lady's playing with a broad brush there. So not everyone agrees with my interpretation.
I said, I think.
Okay.
I think the only one being hostile here is being hostile to our Constitution.
Okay.
There was some comments about hostility and amendments. I don't, um, I don't know why other people may or may not want to send it to the amending order, but the reason I want to send it to the amending order is because I've taken an oath to the Constitution, and the Constitution is super clear on putting more than one topic into a bill. That's what I always tell my constituents all the time, is how Idaho is different. They're like, isn't it hard to read all those bills? And I say, actually, Idaho's a little different because our bills are usually one or two pages long. And, and this, this bill is a little longer than that, but we have more topics. And, and that's why I think people are tired of politicians in Washington, D.C., because they get these big packets of bills. So by sending this to the amending order, we can separate it out into three different distinct topics, which it is, I'm willing and prepared to vote on every topic. I have no changes to any of them. I'll take each piece as they will, but I am bound to uphold the Constitution. If we start slipping when it comes to the Constitution, it's just, um, it's just like sin. Just a little bit here and a little bit there, and, and pretty soon, you know, you don't even recognize yourself anymore. And I think that's what citizens get tired of with politicians. We say, well, just this one time, just this one time, we're going to violate our Constitution, and we're going to put these together for the, just to get out of here quicker, to make the man on the second floor happy. But I remind you once again, if that man on the second floor wants to write legislation, he maybe want to run for a different office. We are the legislator. It is our job to follow the law, to write the law, to follow the Constitution, and, and to make sure that our bills we present follow the Constitution. This bill is in violation to our Constitution with different topics. And it'd be very simple, and we say, oh, I wish it wasn't like this, I wish it wasn't like that. If we don't exercise our power, somebody will exercise that power for us. And it is our govern, our, our man on the second floor that is trying to exercise our power. We do have the power to separate this out into three bills. It would be very simple. It, it might take an extra hour or two, and I know we all want to leave, but we've traveled quite a ways to come down here. I'd rather do it right and do it legally than, um, just get the thing passed through. So I'm, I'm asking you to vote yes, to send this to the amending order and to just separate out these three topics, and then we just do a vote on those three topics.
Is there further debate? Lady from 23.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a point of order. It's not my understanding that we can generate new bills in general orders. It's amending a single bill. Is that accurate?
I believe that's accurate. Is there further debate? Hearing none? Then the debate on the motion is closed. The question before us is, shall we send House Bill number 1 to general orders? Ring the bell? Everybody is in? Clerk will unlock the machine, and the members will record their votes. Does any member wish to change his vote? The clerk will lock the machine and record the vote. The vote count shows 13 in favor with 57 against. The motion is failed. Is there further debate on House Bill number 1? Gentleman for 2.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think that most of us would agree that we want this bill to pass. I... With that said, make no mistake, we are being railroaded. I have an August 2020 letter from the Attorney General that specifically states that we have the authority to, uh, exercise our legislative authority, notwithstanding whatever the proclamation of the gentleman on the second floor has to say. We're not bound by that proclamation. That's the Attorney General saying that. There's no question, but the gentleman on the second floor shouldn't be writing tax bills. Legislation shouldn't be, we shouldn't be rubber stamping the gentleman on the second floor's bills. We do have the authority to fix this. We do, we just don't have the will to fix this. And I'm not going to stand in front of that locomotive. Thank you.
Further debate? Lady from 35.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, to be here to represent the people that have contacted me, as many others have stated, and I'm sure many of you have received calls and concerns from your constituents as well. I'm here to do the right thing for the citizens, and it is right for us to have tax relief for our citizens. We earlier attempted, as has been mentioned, to get some property tax reform, which is the number one thing I'm hearing from my constituents. Um, also have heard a lot about food tax repeal. That would be an immediate help to our citizens, and they are, they are suffering. We know that, and I think it's going to get worse sadly. As has been mentioned also, we are here at the call of the gentleman on the second floor. And he said that we are here, um, he's calling the extraordinary session to address the crushing impacts of historic inflation. Do you seriously in your, in your heart and soul believe that, that this is going to help these citizens right now with the inflation? 300 bucks? 600 bucks? It's not enough. It's really not enough. Uh, I know we could do much more. Uh, I wish that we could separate these, uh, topics. Doesn't look like that's going to happen because I do believe that it's setting a dangerous precedent. So I, I just implore you to think about the citizens in your districts, the challenges that they have right now, the heavy burdens of taxes, and that we can give them relief now. And I'm, I just appreciate your thoughtfulness on that. Thank you.
Is there further debate? Lady from 9.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, um, and fellow colleagues. I absolutely, uh, do not like this bill in any way, shape, or form. I think this bill and this entire process is very, very disrespectful to our Constitution, to our voters, to our taxpayers, and to the incoming class. We are telling them, we do not trust them to make decisions, and we don't want to listen to their ideas on what they think about school funding. There clearly is no emergency on school funding when the date is that far out, as we heard the gentleman from District 34 say. I do believe this bill is unconstitutional. I read the Constitution quite literally. When it says we cannot mix subjects, we cannot mix subjects. We cannot make a special pot of money for education and not say it is a policy. It's not, not constitutional to do this. I take my oath extremely serious. To me, it is a very serious offense to break that oath. Our schools, as you well know, received a lot of money this last couple of years from us and from the federal government. I'm sure you all received a letter from the big business lobby saying that under our current governor's tenure, the schools have received a 75% increase in those few years. And now we want to dump more money into this. All of the alternative RSs have been stopped. They were never given a chance whatsoever because why? They're not the second floor's bill. Now, people are begging for property tax relief. All of you know that. All of you have heard from them. My current district in Adams County, the county commissioners there so far have received 40 phone calls from 40 property tax owners who say there is no way they can pay their property tax bill in December. Adams County is a very small county with a very small population. Multiply that across this entire state. That is the real emergency here, is the property tax. So in response to that, I wrote an R S because we have this large pot of money, and instead of going to the schools, I felt it should go to the property tax owners. It's the same amount. It also included a drop in the income tax rate and to flatten it with the same exact date. We are a separate branch, and we haven't acted like it for a very, very long time. I am ashamed that we are acting like Congress, that we are acting like we're an agency of the second floor instead of a separate constitutional branch. And I will be voting no.
Is there further debate? Lady from 14.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, to debate the bill. Ladies and gentlemen, there have been, uh, a lot of numbers that have been, um, that have been discussed today, and, um, I want to add a few numbers to that list of, of numbers that we're discussing. In terms of education, now there's one number that I would dare say there's not a single adult Idahoan that would not quote this number to you, that we are 49th or 50th in our spending per pupil. And that has gone on for, not recently, but for decades. And there's a reason for that. We're a small state with a small budget, with a lot of kids to educate, and I'm proud of that. But there is something we can be very proud of that tops that 49th and 50th number. One of those numbers is 55. 55%. We spend a historic number this last year, 55% of our state budget. Do you know that that is about sixth in the nation, last time I checked, of all 50 states, the percent of our state budget that we dedicate to education? Sixth in the nation. That's not a number that we talk about. Here's a few other numbers that we don't talk about. NAEP scores, National Assessment of Education Process, progress, kind of the gold standard in terms of education and assessment. Most, uh, experts on education would use NAEP scores to compare not only, um, our nation to other nations, but state to state and even district to district. We use NAEP numbers. So here are a few NAEP numbers that I think don't get hardly the play that they should in the press and among our, our constituents, and that is our 4th graders 17th in the nation in terms of their math achievement, 12th in the nation in terms of their reading. Our 4th graders are reading 12th in the nation. How about 18? The number 18, that's our 8th graders' reading scores. 20th, 20th overall in terms of achievement, 16th overall in the improvement of student achievement. Now, why isn't that making the headlines? Why isn't that what we're focusing on? We are allowing a narrative, and we're furthering that, that narrative today, that we are 49th or 50th, and we have to get out of that place or nothing's happening in education. I would say that there is not a correlation between what we are spending and what we are getting in terms of our education results. If that were the case, New York and, uh, and Washington, D.C., that spends two and a half times what we do, would be leading the nation in achievement, or at least in the top 20 like we are, and that's not the case. What we need to be doing here is, is determining the factors that got us to these, these achievement, uh, the use achievement numbers, and start focusing on those factors and not the red herring over here that is spending because there is no correlation. So we are throwing good money after bad. We don't know until we drill down on the programs that are increasing this student learning. As long as we're looking at this red herring, we're not going to get anywhere, get any further and move those numbers. I'd suggest that one of those factors that's helping us be successful is school choice. That won't surprise you. We should be providing more opportunities for our parents to find the best educational model and fit for their child, and that happens, but to be by expanding school choice. You know, I feel like there's been a clarion call in our nation and in our state for parents to have a voice and a choice when it comes to the education of their children. Now, I have heard the words said today that this education funding piece of this two-part bill doesn't contain policy. There's no policy. We could say that we're, there is tax policy, that we are addressing tax policy here, but the exact words, no policy. This education piece has no policy. We are policymakers that are not making policy here. One of the things that we hold dearest, in my opinion, and is the actual freedom that we have in this country is based on representative governance. That has not been able to fully happen here today in this building. We have not seen representative governance. As a matter of fact, we may have seen representing the As a matter of fact, we may have seen representing the governor, the gentleman on the second floor. But this is a fundamental freedom that we value, and we have valued it so much that we have said that we want to amend our Constitution. You've joined us in saying, let's amend this Constitution, make sure that we, as the representatives of our constituents, can call ourselves back into session. That's the high value that we have placed on representative governance. That simply is not happening here today. So in conclusion, I would invite you to focus on the numbers that really matter. Let's not pass this bill based on our education spending and that 49th or 50th, but let's come back and look at the things that are actually making a difference and pass real policy in the upcoming legislative session.
Gentleman from 32.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Great discussion today. I'm learning a lot, a lot of ideas. My feelings are evolving continually. Not that long ago, it seemed like unless you put your kids on a yellow bus and sent them to a red brick school with overcrowded teachers or overcrowded classrooms, underpaid and underappreciated teachers, anything other than that, it was a bad idea. Let me tell you about Oneida County. We're not known for much. We're one of the largest land counties in Idaho. Last I checked, we still haven't had -- still don't have 5,000 residents. We're known for the world's best mined and produced pumice and perlite. But we're also known as Idaho's largest virtual academy. We have probably somewhere around 800 students K through 12 in the school district, but we have over -- or around 8,000 students enrolled in the academy, virtual academy. That's up from 2,500 just three years ago. This is large. So when I hear that we've got a plan for growing growth because we got influx of population, we've got to have all these new schools, we need to also consider that there are new options that are finally becoming considered viable, and they're great. For these students that in the public school, the at church, that red brick school that are in the margins or in the cracks, a virtual academy or some other option is a great choice. So I think that as we consider, you know, growth and what we're going to need and planning for the future and budget set aside, we need to also consider that other options, other choices, the vouchers, and it sounds like we've hinted on that that is possible, how this money can be spent. But let's not get into the yellow bus and the red brick school overcrowded classroom mentality because things are changing and we need to allow things to change, that there are great options besides just that that are helping what we really all want to do. We can talk about investment. We can talk about accountability, efficiency, effectiveness. We want the students to be better, to be better educated. We're not really seeing the results. We've heard it my entire lifetime, if we just had more money, we'll get better results. The numbers really don't support that. We have more staff, we have more spending, and we pretty much have the same results. So I'd be in favor of better plans, better choices, and considering what will actually be more effective and more efficient. Thank you for your time and Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Is there further debate? Lady from 35.
To debate for the second time.
Anyone who wishes to debate the bill for the first time. Gentleman from 10.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For old time's sake, I was looking forward to you calling on me as the gentleman from 12, but thank you. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but...
Because the gentleman from nine is not blocking your number.
I have to say, I agree with an awful lot of what the good lady from 14 said a few minutes ago. I think that many times our education system is overly derided based on our rank in spending. That's not what I rose to speak to, but before I speak to that, I wanted to address what the good lady said. I do think we're getting an awfully good value, but I think that we're pushing the edges of how far that value can go. I know that the good lady from 14 and others have worked hard. I've been proud in my time in this body to support school choice options. I was, as I was growing up, I attended -- the only person I knew that was at some point homeschooled, at some point in private school, and at some point in public school. There weren't charter schools back then, but my kids have made up for that. We've graduated three from a charter school so far. And so those options are wonderful things. There is no education policy here. There is some tax policy here. But I say that because what you lose when you enable those good things is you lose in economies of scale. And one thing I've heard from the educators in Caldwell is that while they appreciate and respect the charter schools, it kind of dilutes the resources coming in. And I know that the good lady from 30 tried really hard a few years ago to make a different funding model other than the per pupil effort. And that solution, if it ever materialized, would without a doubt address a lot of that problem. And I wish the good lady Godspeed and fair wins in her continued efforts on that. But I wanted to address that, first of all, and secondly, I wanted to address the constitutionality. I respect what the good lady from nine said, and we all have an obligation under our oath of office to look at the Constitution and decide as best we can what it means independently. And if it's your conscience that you don't think that the Idaho Constitution authorizes this number of subjects, then so be it. It looks like one subject to me, it's revenue. What do we do with the revenue streams? We're going to lower it here, and we're going to dedicate it there. It seems pretty consistent to me. But overwhelmingly, we've passed bills, in fact, or proposed bills. Do I need permission to refer to old legislation that's not pending before the body?
Is it -- did it make it into law?
No.
And without objection, the gentleman may continue.
All right, thank you. For example, House Bill 470 from 2022 touched on four different title sections. The bill that we passed, and I know that many of you may have raised similar objections to it, the bill we passed relating to funding for the public school health insurance programs, touched on multiple titles, all the same subject. I think that the case law, as far as the people in the black robes who would double-check our work, is very well settled as it relates to what a single subject is. So once again, I respect each person's ability to figure out for themselves what the Constitution means, but if you're teetering on your vote on the basis that you fear that it might be unconstitutional, that's not the way the case law reads, just plain and simply. This isn't on the line, this is well inside the line. We do, as a body, have the right to address any issue within the topic that we've been called to legislate on. So the RS that was attached defines the topic. The Idaho Constitution says that we -- that the governor gets to define the topic. Lower g there. So the gentleman on the second floor has defined the topic. We're not constrained to the RS, however. We don't get to set the topic, and we don't get to set the tone. There's a pending amendment to the Constitution, but for us to follow the Constitution, we must at least resign ourselves to the fact that we don't currently have that power under the Constitution to define the topic. You're entitled to be frustrated by what you have, by options that weren't presented, but as far as constitutionality, I don't see a problem at all. Thank you.
Is there further debate? Good lady from District 30.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I agree with much of what the lady said from District 14, and I thank her for making those arguments. If there was ever a year that money was going to make a difference in educating our students in Idaho, it was this last year. Because the federal government put unprecedented amounts of money into the system in the last year. 87% of the third round of that funding remains unspent right now. So not only does nationally the amount of money not necessarily correlate with higher outcomes, that's true in Idaho as well. I challenge you to go to Idaho Education News Data Center and put in your district, put somebody else in who's spending double, and look at the outcomes. That was in a recent news report, there's just not a correlation. So why invest this money then? Because like the good gentleman from 10 said, it's time to change the way we fund. We're doing it in a way from the 90s. I don't pay hardly any attention to the per student amounts in Idaho because guess what? We don't fund that way. We fund on a 28-year-old system that was built for the 90s, that funds the system. And the state defines how much can go to this, that, and the other, right? The local people should be making those decisions. So if we can get this money to go into our public schools and to our students and families in ways that will drive outcome changes, I'm all for that. And I'm prepared to fight that battle in the next session. So I will be voting yes for this bill.
Is there further debate? For the first time. Lady from one.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to bring up a few more points from my constituents, just so it's on the record. I think one of the things that concerns me about this bill is that 24 non...
Good lady, is this your second time?
I've never testified on the bill yet.
Go ahead.
Okay.
It seemed like you had.
I know.
You have the floor to continue your debate.
Okay.
Your enumerated debate.
Okay, so I want to bring up a few issues that I've had with this bill, just so my constituents know why I will be voting against this bill. One of my first big red flags on this bill is that there's 24 non-returning legislators that are teamed with the executive branch and a lot of Democrats. Mr. Speaker, a point of order. Again, I just wanted to remind everybody about Mason's Chapter 13, Section 121, Number Two, and about impugning motives.
So age, 23, whatever, you have your own motives, and you...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm well aware of the rules, and I did not violate the rules. I was just stating a fact, that 24 of the non-returning legislators and Democrats are cosponsoring this bill with the man on the second floor. That's just a statement. So that's how I started, if I could just finish. So that is a concern to me, number one, is that there's so many people that aren't even going to be here, that the voters have said, we don't, you know, they're maybe not, they didn't want them back, or they've decided their time was done. And now we have new people, a new crop of people coming in with new ideas, that they represent the people, and the people have chose them, and now we're saying, no, we're going to get a few more things done with the old bunch. And that's a concern to me, just how it was worked with the man on the second floor and that. That was all done before the legislation, the final legislation was looked at.
Gentleman from 11.
Your point is well noted. We do have a tradition in the House to refer to the big G as uppercase, as the good gentleman referred to it, as the gentleman on the second floor. The governor's office, little g, is a different story. So if you'll thread that needle in your debate, that would be great. Go ahead.
I wonder if I should just start back over again. Every time I get started, I get interrupted. So let me just rephrase that in a different way. 24 non-returning legislators have teamed with the executive branch and...
Gentleman from 21.
This sounds personal.
Oh, my gosh.
24 of us who are leaving, who have teamed...
So the gentleman is objecting to, again, back to what the lady from 23 was...
This is, Mr. Speaker, this is common knowledge. This is the cosigners list that I'm talking about. I haven't said anything one way or another.
The conclusions that you draw from that...
I have not raised a conclusion. I'm just stating the fact that they have cosponsored this with the executive branch. Is that not a fact?
That is a fact, but the conclusion that you draw at that point, that's where you run into...
I haven't drawn a conclusion. I haven't been able to finish. Thank you.
Do you think it is a good thing or a bad thing? You think it's a bad thing, so therefore you're drawing a conclusion, and you're associating the 23 with that.
Mr. Speaker, I did not...
You're a skilled debater, so please continue.
Thank you. I will rephrase it. So there are many good new people...
Gentleman from 32.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd just like to remind the lady that I am elected to represent the people of Legislative District 32 until the 30th day of November. Thank you.
Okay, so the gentleman, you've heard him, he's signed up, cleared till the end of November, and he's going to do his job.
That's great. That's very good. I'm so happy for that. Thank you. Okay, so back to my testimony. The tax rebate in itself, it's very small. I know the constituent in my districts, the issues that they have right now are property taxes. Their assessments have, there's been a lot of people moving into Idaho, their assessments are high, and they're terrified they're not going to be able to pay their property taxes. So I think a property tax, a long-term property tax, or an elimination of the property tax may be a better way to use this big surplus of $2 billion. I also am concerned, well, let's see. I'm not seeing anything political's going on. I'm very happy that they're getting their checks before the November election, though. I don't, I have a problem...
Be careful, I should go forward on that subject.
I'm going forward, but I'm happy they're going to get their checks by the November election. And I just, that's all I want to say about that. And then the flat rate. Let's be clear here, the corporations will benefit. The Democrats even pointed this out. They're very happy that we're getting a lot of, many of the Democrats have testified, they're very happy to get the money into the schools, but at the expense of the corporations getting a big tax cut. It will help the big donors to this state, and that concerns me a bit. I would much rather see property tax. I never have people complain about their income tax, but they're always concerned about their property tax and their assessments. And then the $400 million to schools. Over the last two years, we've given 24% more money to our schools in the last two fiscal years. I do not believe that our schools need another dime until we stop teaching critical race theory, till we remove the explicit sexual content from our libraries and the books in our libraries. I don't feel comfortable giving any more...
Objection, Mr. Speaker. We're rather far afield.
The minority leaders objected to, you're getting too far afield, she says. You were just about to come back, Roe, right? Go ahead.
I'm concerned how the money will be spent in our schools. Right now, when we push back as a legislative body on a policy, they seem to dig their heels in and go even deeper on that policy. We've tried to push policy that would be non-sexually explicit policy, that would be more morally standing policy, and we continually get pushback from the same schools. Now, we're going to give them another $400 million. I have so many students that graduate that are just completely lost anymore. Kids these days don't know if they're a boy or a girl when they graduate from school. They're still trying to decide. And so I don't know that funding more schools...
Objection.
... focus on reading, writing, and arithmetic...
Speaker, objection.
All right. Can we get, Mr. Speaker, could we get the parameters of this debate? Is this going to be everything and anything about education? Is this going to be everything and anything about education or just a very specific matter here? We really could use some guidance here. Much of the debate that we've heard is probably better in the next legislative session as to the strings that we may attach or may not attach to the unappropriated money that is in this bill. Now, the lady, I believe, is making, you know, is creating a list of things she doesn't want it to be spent on, and so therefore she's opposed to it, to the, you know, to the unappropriated amount. And so that's why I've allowed it, sir. But if we spend a lot of time on policy that may be set in a future legislative setting, then that would not be proper in the debate of this bill.
But to say it another way, $400 million to just put into a bucket for the school when we don't have that policy set up. We don't know where that money's going to go or how it's going to be spent. And I know we say we'll do it in the future, but what if we decide to go another route in the future? Or what if the next body decides to go another route? To me, putting $400 aside for an already failing school, that I do not believe that the system is broken. The system is broken in our schools. And until we fix that, I'm not willing to give them another penny until they clean up the system that they have right now. And back to the policy, I won't get into the specifics, but every single policy we try to put out of this body, we get pushed back from the schools. And so I am not willing to give them any more money at this point, even though it means we're, I'm going to vote against a tax cut. And that comes back to my original problem, is this is a violation of our Constitution. It's super clear, one topic. This is asking me to vote to reduce taxes on one hand, but then to appropriate money for schools on another hand. It's two different issues for me, totally opposite issues, not even related into a way that I feel comfortable voting, one bill. And that's why our rules are set up that we can divide questions like this so we don't put people in uncomfortable positions. This puts me in an uncomfortable position to have to vote no when I like many parts of this bill. And so that's my concern with the bill. That's what I'm trying to share about my constituents. Property taxes are huge. And I really don't appreciate being interrupted every time I try to start a talk here.
And don't say objection, we'll stop. Lady from 35.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
For the second time?
Yes.
Gentleman from 16.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the first time. So I actually was not planning on saying anything, but I've heard some things that I have concerns about. And so I just want to be clear for the record that I, and I'm pretty sure there are 69 other people with me, we're not here to do the bidding of the gentleman on the second floor. And I didn't sign on to, as a cosponsor to that bill, to do his bidding. I am here to represent Democrats in my district. I'm here to represent Republicans in my district. I'm here to represent independents in my district. And I'm here to represent the people who aren't voting in my district. That's why we are all here. And I take offense to the idea that anyone in here would be kowtowing to another person's desire instead of what our constituents' desires are. So I want to make sure that gets out there. Like many of you, we're used to being gone from January through March. And here we are, the first day of September. This is unusual, this is special, this is extraordinary. And so in order to be here today, we've taken time off from work. So I had to take time off from work. So I had to get a substitute to cover my classes today. We still have a shortage of substitute teachers in Boise and West Ada and the Treasure Valley and all across our states. We also had a number of teachers who were hired late and even positions that remain unfilled. In spite of this great amount of money that we're throwing at education and how are we, what are the results that we're going to see? If we keep attacking our public education system, we are not going to see, continue to see strong NAEP scores. We are not going to continue to see this great value that we get for our dollar right now. Yeah, we are low. We are 49th, 50th, 51st in education spending. And yeah, we are getting a good, or at least we have been getting good value for a dollar. But if we keep attacking public education, we will not continue to see those types of results. So I think we need to be really cautious. As I came in today, I was well-prepared.
The gentleman from 34, for what purpose you rise?
I object. The word attacking is attributing motives to the legislative process here.
Message received, Mr. Speaker and good gentleman.
Mike, we have a bill before us that's very clear. We're starting to, you know, to push each other's buttons. I don't know that that serves us well. So we're better than that, and so let's proceed. I apologize to the good lady for that parting shot that I did at the end there. That was in violation of the spirit of the law as I'm trying to explain now. So we, it's clear what we have in front of us. Let's debate that, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. And we can buttress whether we think it's good by short vignettes or experiences, but let's stay on the bill. Thank you. Go ahead, gentleman from 16.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll just wrap up. I came into this believing that this was a good bill, and I still believe this is a good bill. I will be giving it my green light, and I hope that you all will, too.
Thank you. Is there further debate for the first time? Lady from 11.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wanted to just throw a couple of other things out there. A lot that has been said I agree with. Lady from 1, the lady from 30, 14, have all, 9 have all brought up points that I feel also and that I'm hearing from my constituents. But I wanted to bring it back to our constituents. I think we're doing a real disservice to our constituents. I really believe that there was no agenda posted last night to be able to prepare people to be able to testify.
Someone has their microphone still on. I'm hearing disturbance. It is yours. We can't. Maybe you could use the gentleman from 4.
All right.
Yeah, that's way better. Go ahead.
Thank you. So as I was saying, I had constituents reaching out to me over the last few days wanting to know when they could come and testify, if testimony was being given, what the process was going to be. And it wasn't until, really, this morning that we really knew what we were going to be doing. Like I said, there was no agenda that I could find posted for the House nor the Senate to be able to let them know what was transpiring so that they could come in and be part of that process and testify. So I feel it's a disservice because the people are supposed to be part of the process. It's a government buy and for the people. They're supposed to be part of that process, especially because we are utilizing taxpayer money to be able to do what we're doing. And it is affecting our taxpayers in ways that are unprecedented during this time period because of inflation and the rising costs that we see going on in food and gas and property values and homes and so on. So I believe that they should be part of that process. Now, some were able to come. We were able to get the word out to our constituents